This month is on Sunday, the Bull Park Pian. It's at the school and goes down. The title is "Grasping the Architectural Possibilities of the New Light." The speaker is Bruce Ladderty. Bruce is a professor at Wesley University and for 40 years was curator of the Architectural Program at the Hessen A. in Washington Square Garden. Here we'll talk about the Green Lantern Crisis, its pivotal role in American architecture, arts itself, and so we hope to see some of you that weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Any other public comment? Okay, so that takes us to the first section of our agenda, which is Environment and EAC.
All right. Well, first I'll just give a quick report on some of the things that the EAC has been doing. We'll get to the fence stuff soon enough, so consider this a comedic diversion, but just a change of subject for the moment. On March 29, we had 25 volunteers from Tremor and the School at Rose Valley community work to remove ivy from 72 trees. On April 5, we had multiple volunteers that -- 56 volunteers totaled for the two days. 184 trees were freed from English ivy. So this has been three years in a row. We're going to do it for the foreseeable future. It's not relevant to fences, but ivy on trees creates misery for homeowners and people in a variety of ways because the trees suffer, die, collect ice and snow, and fall, and other things. And anyway, we're making slow progress, and I think next year we're going to volunteer to remove trees from people's private residences if they would like us to do that. And all that's involved, given all the deer we have, is going around the base of the tree, cutting off the ivy, and the deer will come and eat any new ivy thereafter most of the time. And then the ivy that's above that will die, and eventually winds will blow it off, and the tree will look like it never had ivy on it. It may take a while, but -- and the leaves fall out pretty soon. Anyway, we did that. And Kathy Sewickie, who's on our board, has done a wonderful job of that for three years. We had a large attendance at her last EAC meeting of approximately 20 Rose Valley Borough residents because we announced a PICO energy assessment that would be available at no charge. And Michael Scheller from PICO came and gave a talk, and virtually everybody at the meeting signed up and got an energy assessment, and I think that was a good public service. Our minutes are now being posted reasonably promptly on the EAC component of the Borough website, and since I write most of the minutes, they're detailed, but there's a lot of stuff that we're doing every month. And we have seven people and also additional associate members of the EAC who are all trying to contribute different things. We have a native plant sale scheduled for May 10. We have a volunteer day to work in the preserves on May 10 and May 17. We have the -- well, I think that's a good summary. And for more information that will entertain you immensely, read the website when we publish our minutes from the last meeting. I think the next thing is the issue of what has been called many different things, the fowl ordinance, the rooster ordinance, the chicken ordinance. And we've been down this road for -- since, I think, June of 2024, when the issue first arose. Several emails were sent to Borough Council in the last few days. There have probably been more than 100 emails sent to Borough Council or to me over the last 10 months. I'll spare you a summary of the entire history, but the most recent emails were all directed, to my knowledge, unless I missed one, or more than one, to the issue of the provision in the proposed ordinance for an enclosure. And I apologize for giving further commentary here, but as a matter of information, when Borough Council wants to pass an ordinance, and this is relevant to the fence ordinance, just like it is to the fowl ordinance, the first thing Borough Council does is decide on whether to propose a particular drafted ordinance for publication. And then it has to be published, it's posted on the Borough website, it's published in a local newspaper, it's in our minutes. So word gets around, and certainly word got around in the chicken ordinance because we had a dozen or more people who were profoundly invested in that, and I kept them fully informed at all times. So everybody knew that this was the way it works, and I'll just share this with you all because you're our residents and you should know the same thing. It gets approved for publication, and then at the next meeting, it gets debated, including public comment, on whether it should be passed or amended. So nothing can be done tonight, just as informational purposes, except a possible decision to publish something for further comment. So that's just informative. Now, in terms of what we did with the fowl ordinance... Now, in terms of what we did with the fowl ordinance, get it organized here. This is the one that says roosters. There we go. The only comments that I'm aware of in the last few days and since our last Borough Council meeting relate to the issue of requirement for an enclosure. The current ordinance says, quote, in relevant part, "Outdoor fowl must be kept in an enclosure." Having been aware for 45 years and living with the world of arguing things are ambiguous, I would concede that the word "kept" is ambiguous. Is it kept for safekeeping? Is it kept as a prison? This was wording, and I'll take responsibility for this, that we copied from a neighboring municipality. I've visited people on these chickens. I mean, I can imagine a grandchild coming and wanting to see the chickens and letting the chickens out of the coop. People have expressed real concerns about this because of the literal words. I have made this point in the past, there is no penalty provision for this. So I mean, people could violate this provision of the ordinance and not be subject to any penalty unless it became a problem. The only penalty provided for in this proposed ordinance is relating to roosters, and the ordinance specifically prohibits roosters in the burrow because of a noise concern that has been expressed. And it requires two weeks' notice before any penalty of a very modest sum of $20 a week would be imposed, which allows for conjugal visitation, as it were. People want to have a rooster so they can have fertile eggs, although that's a whole different problem because it turns out if the eggs are full, the hens won't get off the eggs, and then you can't get the eggs to feed them to your family. So I really know about roosters the last 10 months, and I love them. But anyway, the issue, the only issue therefore is, we published this notice at our last meeting, or authorized it, and it says what it says. We've been working on this for approximately 10 months now. I recognize and acknowledge the concerns that have been expressed about this idea that you have to keep all your chickens in a prison and let them out to wander around if somebody's visiting or something. It's also been the case that these chickens in various places, I've been told at least by some residents, they wander off the property onto neighbors' properties and cause concerns with their fecal material and other things that can be highly infectious, and if dogs or cats eat it, and on and on and on. As I say, this is a remarkably educational experience. But the law and standard principles, you can't trespass on your neighbor's property, whether it's yourself or through your animals. So it's already against the law to do that, from my perspective as a lawyer, but it certainly has been an issue of concern. Having said that, I personally don't have any problem with an eventual provision that would make clear that outdoor fowl are temporarily allowed outside an enclosure if supervised at all times and if kept at all times on the property of the fowl owners. Having said that, my own recommendation to the borough is that we pass the ordinance as published and as proposed and agree to do this as an amendment in the future so that we can at least make progress on this and have a law on the books that addresses the concerns of rooster noise, which has been a hotly debated issue, and I don't think there's a right answer or a wrong answer, but I think my own personal judgment is to agree that noise needs to be abated and that roosters should therefore not be permitted in approximate living conditions, which is what we have now. And that's what I've recommended to council in the past, and I'll make that recommendation again. So I would move that we pass the ordinance as published, and I would recommend that our next meeting, that we publish an amendment, a proposed amendment, with the additional language that I expressed, and in the meantime, I would propose to make clear to our residents that there's no anticipated penalty for allowing chickens to be outside of an enclosure for supervised periods of time. That is a long statement, and I apologize for taking so much of your time.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I address that, Leonard? If the change that you want to make is in that one section that deals with kept, kept in a enclosure, you have the right to make an amendment to the published ordinance now because it's not a significant change. In other words, you're not rewriting the ordinance, you're simply adjusting one little part of it. So if you wanted to take back the current motion, rewrite that one section about the enclosure so that you have a different sentence in there, you could then put that forward and council could vote on it tonight. And it would have to be an individual voice vote, it can't be a group vote because it's an ordinance. But you can do that without having to republish it and re-advertise it and go through the expense of having two ordinances when one will do.
Guy, thank you very much.
Let's finish our discussion, and then you can decide whether to amend
Okay.
And how you want to amend your motion. So I'll offer a couple of comments. On that provision, if this is the version that we're going to go forward with, on that provision, I'm fine with either striking the provision altogether, that fowl have to be kept in an enclosure, or time limiting it. And to time limit it, I would say in 4A, outdoor fowl must be kept in an enclosure between the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM, you know, something like that overnight, but specifying the specific hours so that during the day, people can let their chickens wander.
Can I speak to that, or would you rather I defer?
Well, let me give you my other suggested change for this one, which would be, I would strike the provision on waste management and sanitation altogether. Because we don't do that for other animals, and so I wouldn't, I think it's too heavy-handed.
Can I comment?
Those are my two comments on that.
So on the issue of setting hours of the day, the complaints that have been brought to my attention include chickens wandering onto other people's property during the day. So, and I don't know all the details about the risks to pets if they eat the excrement of other, a fowl. I know that I have a friend whose beagle ate goose poop and died, and apparently that's a regularly recognized phenomenon. I don't know how it relates to chickens.
Right.
But I know people have expressed real concern about having other people's chickens wander onto their property. And I don't think that's, personally, I don't think it's appropriate to do that without your neighbor's permission. And so I think an enclosure is an appropriate thing to require at all times unless supervised. So having daytime hours doesn't address supervision.
And my limited experience with chickens is that that's what most people are going to do. They're going to keep them in a chicken coop with a little fenced-in area, but I want people to have the ability, if they want to let their chickens out, to forage during the day, to do it.
And I want to do that, I want to allow that, too. I acknowledge that. But I don't think it should be done unsupervised because they'll go anywhere. That's my personal view.
Okay.
And I'll just address the second point, which, there were in the past, any number of comments of concern about the waste management and sanitation. And this, too, comes from some neighboring jurisdictions. As I've explained to people who've expressed this concern, and I'll share here, there's no penalty provision here.
But there is, violating a borough ordinance would just subject you to our general penalties.
That's new information to me.
Isn't that right?
Well, we've gone down this path before about whether there are specific penalties or whether the borough would have to take action in one of two ways. You'd have to take civil action in cases where simply asking them to stop whatever they're doing, and there would be no penalty. If you take criminal action, if it violates a nuisance provision, et cetera, then there would be a penalty set forth either by the state or by the borough code, yes.
Right. Well, I, okay, for starters, I don't fully understand that, and I want to be sure I understand. The intention here was, and I was the drafter, and I'm drafting from ignorance, so I apologize for that, in a document that makes a specific provisions for a financial penalty, as this does, and the only provision is for owning a rooster and keeping it after a certain period of notice, in my experience as a lawyer, it implies to me that other provisions where no penalty is referenced are not subject to a financial penalty. That was my intent. If in fact, there's some overriding provision of our borough or our state itself...
The borough doesn't have to seek a penalty for anything other than, I mean, the part about the roosters, it's just a fine of $20 per week after two weeks, and then $100 per week after the first five weeks with notice given. Those penalties are technically civil penalties with no, there's no criminal sanction to that. In other words, there's nothing else that can be done, that people can be charged this money, and if they pay it, they pay it, and if they don't pay it, the borough would have a civil remedy to go after the money.
That was exactly my intention.
But when we talked about this in the beginning, my understanding was that we didn't want to have criminal penalties involved in this ordinance.
That's also true.
Because we weren't trying to punish people as much as we were simply trying to control the situation so that there would be peace in the valley.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's what this ordinance is trying to do, I believe, as written.
So therefore, my understanding is there's no penalty possibility absent an amendment of the ordinance for non-compliance with the sanitation.
We don't, we don't go after people criminally.
I'm not talking about our discretion.
So there's no penalty.
I'm talking about whether there's a right to do it in the first place.
And there's no other civil penalty written in here.
So there is no penalty.
But what about under the borough, the state borough code? Isn't there provision for penalties for violating an ordinance?
The state, no, the state code wouldn't address this ordinance as written with just a civil penalty in it.
What about in our borough ordinances? Is there a general penalty provision?
For violating any ordinance.
Well, again, I go back to, the state has usurped several of those by saying there's nuisance rules at the state level, and we could exercise the criminal penalties under the nuisance statutes and the harassment statutes and disorderly conduct statutes because they're written loosely enough, and those would be at the state level, and we would be able to use those state penalties in those, yes.
Let me ask this more directly, then. So if we adopt this as is, Article 4 is enclosures for fowl, outdoor fowl must be kept in an enclosure.
Right.
If somebody's not keeping their fowl in an enclosure, our remedy is to cite them, right?
We can ask them to behave, or we can cite them, yes.
And if we cite them, do we assess penalties, or what's the remedy?
If you cite them, that it creates a nuisance, which is what it would be under the nuisance provisions, then there is a penalty that the state law provides, I believe it's up to $500.
Okay.
And that penalty is set, you file a citation, and the penalty would be set by the district magistrate. In other words, they would have the right to say, I'll make it $50, I'll make it $100, I'll make it $500.
So in provisions where we're setting our own different penalty amounts?
Right. We're limited to that.
We're limited to that, but that's just in the alternative to just relying on the general, okay.
Yes, correct.
So to achieve the result that I intended, but the Borough Council may not want to support, we could say there is no penalty as regards articles, other articles.
You can decide that in the way you interpret the ordinance and how you handle it down the road, a year from now or two years from now.
No, we want to tell people in our community what the answer is before they do something.
But I also wouldn't want to adopt an unenforceable ordinance provision.
Well, the premise here was, again, by virtue of my guidance, as I understood it from council, was to not go from zero to 100, but to go from zero to 10. And the issue that was presented to the borough was noise. So the noise provision included a penalty. These other provisions were my theory for best practices. Chickens have become, and especially with eggs now having increased in value, people are very enthused about raising chickens.
And that's why you wrote it this way.
Exactly. I wrote it this way to articulate what I thought was reasonable best practices without an enforcement provision.
Understood.
So that if people violated it, we could come back and amend the ordinance and adopt penalties.
Okay.
Because that was my view of going from zero to 10, but setting a standard. So this is best practices, and I acknowledge, it's not, I mean, we can tell people, you're violating the ordinance, but there's no penalty. They'll either choose to comply or not. If enough people don't comply, we can amend the ordinance to create a penalty. Now, again, this was what I understood to be my charge from the council to draft something, and the community, this is a hot-button issue.
Yep.
Like our fences, I guess we'll go down this road with fences. But I'm trying my best to try and balance the competing concerns of eliminating noise and recommending best practices, especially for people who move in and have to say, well, what can I do and not do? And they're alerted to best practice.
I absolutely appreciate that, and I appreciate the time that you put into drafting the ordinance and trying to strike the balance. I absolutely appreciate that.
And so if it turns out that we have a legal right to cite people and charge them criminally, I would propose a twoement. I'll wait for further discussion, but what I would plan to do is say no penalties for these other things without amendment.
So this might be a good time to pivot because I also, in all of your packets, put an alternate approach. So it's a red line of our existing, and this was something that Cheryl had raised at our last meeting, that we have an existing animal ordinance. It's ordinance 321, I don't know that you have one. Ordinance 321, I think it's probably at the back of your packets, and it shows red line changes we could make to that animal ordinance to turn it into, it's worded as an animal ordinance, but it's really just a dog ordinance.
Right.
But if we made these red line changes, it would apply to not just dogs, but it would apply to other animals, including fowl, which it actually defines, but then never regulates. There are certain change, there are certain provisions in this existing animal ordinance that we need to amend anyway. So for instance, it says in section 4B that one of our options for loose dogs is to deliver them to the SPCA, and the SPCA no longer accepts dogs. So we need to amend that anyway. This would not, doing it this way would not prohibit roosters, but it would get back to the entire focus initially of this ordinance, which was the noise, because it would make noises, and this is section four, it would make rooster noise that annoys persons of ordinary sensibility or interferes with their sleep, a violation of the ordinance. And so instead of prohibiting roosters, we'd be prohibiting rooster noise.
Well, which would not be grandfathered.
This would not be grandfathered.
So...
So it doesn't get reversed?
I don't want to wax overly philosophical here.
Yep.
Nor do I want to make this about me. But I have spent 100 hours listening to our community residents debate and discuss this. And I've heard discussions about, very similar to the fence issues that you're talking about. It'd be better if neighbors talked to each other and worked this out on their own, and there's a very strong libertarian or sort of, maybe that's the wrong word for it, but let's work it out amongst ourselves and not have too many rules and regulations. And that's a wonderful objective. But then there were many other people who said, well, we want to get along with our neighbors, but we don't want to tell them that we're upset by this. We'd rather just have a rule that says they can't do it because we get along with our neighbors and this is a, and the neighbors don't want to discuss it. It's psychodrama at a very small level, as it were, but it's important to the people involved.
Yep.
And so having listened to all these people... And so having listened to all these people, my own view is, it is not appropriate to impose on people, to have a debate over whether noise from a rooster reaches a certain level to be a concern or disrupt them. Roosters all make noise all the time, or almost all roosters make noise almost all the time. And there are people who have been disrupted and very much disturbed by this noise. And almost all municipalities in Delaware County do not permit roosters if it's a reasonably proximate residential community. And I took very informal polling with people around Rose Valley and, you know, everybody's fine unless a rooster's right next to them. And nobody wants a rooster right next to them. I think it is unwise to have any vagueness over the level of noise. I think there's, personally, having listened to all this, and again, I love roosters, I love animals, I love chickens, but people are trying to get a good night's sleep, they're trying to appreciate the world they moved into. And everybody who owns roosters says, "If somebody's unhappy, we'll get rid of them." So there are people who are unhappy. And therefore, I don't think those people should have to say over and over again, "We're unhappy." I think roosters should be prohibited.
Okay.
For stop, except with notice and very modest penalties so that there's time to manage it and, and move on.
Okay.
That's my personal view.
Okay.
And my personal recommendation.
Yep.
Based on the experience I've lived through over the last 10 months.
And I, it's been quite the experience, I know. I just come back to the fact that this is all coming out of one rooster.
No, it's not. That's not true.
Well, that's what precipitated the discussions on the ordinance.
That's, well, I, I can't read people's minds. I've heard from many different people about many different roosters, including in the last two weeks.
Okay. Okay.
So it's not one incident that is resolved.
Okay.
And there are multiple people who have them. And for the most part, I don't want to speak for the rooster-owning community, they're, they're all in favor of the idea of not keeping roosters if they're disruptive. And most people recognize that roosters are a pain in the neck.
Okay.
Not to mention the fact that if you have a rooster, the hens will not let you take the eggs. So it's, I mean, people have said, "It's not the Rose Valley way." People have said, you know, somebody said, "We're not a suburban community." And I looked at him, I said, "What? I'm sorry, I thought this was a suburban community." I mean, I have a neighbor right across the street. And, and, and I think it's wonderful that people have chickens to raise eggs and have a, an environmentally enlightened sort of use of scraps and other things. But I'm not, I don't really have, pardon the animal pun, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I mean, I just have listened and thought about this for so long. I think we should stop nuancing this to death and say there are no roosters. The other stuff is icing on the cake that we can fuss with later.
I agree. So I've been, I've been someone who has said that I didn't think that we needed to have a separate ordinance that went beyond the scope of what I felt we've been asked to address. I thought that looking at the noise and disruptions that any animal makes, including roosters, it's not going out with a decibel meter. It's the same as somebody reporting, somebody has a rooster. They say, "The rooster's making noise." In either case, they go and they say, "Rooster's making noise, it's bothering me." It's enough that they say it's bothering them and it's enforced. But I can give on all that. Regarding the fowl ordinance though, my feeling is, we, we have made it really simple. And I hear you, Leonard. I hear that, I hear over and over that you're saying, "What they want us to do is prohibit roosters." And I hear the chicken community says, "Yeah, we get that. Roosters are unpopular and we don't need to have them." And I also hear that neighbors do not want chickens coming onto their property. My question is, you always go to enclosure and supervision and to me, that seems that it's more, why is it not enough to say, "You must keep your chickens on your property, period. Period." If they go on somebody else's property, then they say, "The chickens were on my property and I took a picture." Cause you know, that's what people will do. And then they'd be in violation. We don't have to talk about whether it's day or night or supervising it. And I thought that maybe that would be a simple way that we could, because it, I agree, it's absolutely sensible. Everybody agrees, "You should keep your chickens on your property. You can't go on other people's property." And so that's my question and obviously my opinion.
So, so we did go down this road on the issue of the original draft had a requirement for a coop.
I'm not saying a coop, I'm just saying on your property, not how you do it, that it is done.
I, I'm trying to share that I acquiesced to the idea of a coop requirement.
Could you acquiesce more?
Well, it's not up to me. I mean, it's up to whatever council wants to do.
Or others. I'd like to hear what others think. I mean-
Fine. My view was-
Shannon, Joe?
Best practices were to have a coop, but if people don't want to have a coop, let them have the chickens eaten by hawks and foxes.
Okay, Joe would like to say something.
Well, I, I just don't see chicken owners not using some type of enclosure to keep their fowl.
But how are they doing?
What are they gonna do? Just leave them run loose all the time?
Everybody has a chicken care. We have foxes here.
I totally agree with you. You know, they should be on the owner's property.
Coop and enclosure are two different things though, right?
No, not really.
Not really. You have to both.
They should be on the owner's property.
Yeah.
Now how that owner deals with it.
No, how they have a chicken.
We have had people who have gotten chickens and just thought they could let them run on their property. And we've had to go back and say, "You have to make an enclosure." Cause they were running all over their neighbor's property and the neighbors didn't want it.
Can't go on neighbors' property.
It's sad to think that you have to, you have to do something like that, that a person would think like, "Oh, my chickens, I, I love my chickens so much that my neighbors will love them as much as I do." And they don't. They don't want them.
I agree. They shouldn't go on.
I had to go back and these neighbors were missed at for asking them to put their chickens in an enclosure. So, you know, you, you hope that people are always going to be sensible, but there, there are people who are not sensible. And I think that one of the people who's a big chicken supporter now, I have had problems with her chicken. I almost killed her whole flock because they were all out of prices line. And I, and I wasn't expecting the chickens to be there and I went up there in my car and stopped my car and they were all around my tires. So, 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 and I'm still, and still, we're getting this kind of argument, you know, from people like, "Oh, they should be able to roam and feed."
No, only on their own property.
Oh, but they gotta do something on their own property.
Whatever they do, they gotta do it.
And you can't assume that they're going to be sensible and know that. You have, you do have, you have to write it down sometimes.
Okay.
So Cheryl, my, my take on that is, if you're gonna own chickens, you have to have an enclosure at night or you have to bring them inside.
Sure you do.
Well, and I think this is for outdoor fowl.
Yeah.
It only says for outdoor fowl.
I understand.
So therefore you have to have an enclosure.
Well, they, they have to have them. The question is whether you keep them in and supervise them in day and night. Isn't, isn't it enough to have language?
I'm gonna just stand by what I recommend.
How about this?
Okay.
So outdoor fowl is not defined. So why don't we say, "Fowl must be kept in an enclosure between the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM," or whatever hours you want, "and shall not be allowed to stray beyond the premises of the owner."
I, I'm in favor of what I said before in terms of they're allowed to be outside under supervision. I, I, I don't think it's a, I think people should be put on notice. They, they have to be there if the chickens are outside the enclosure.
Okay.
And if they're not there, it's inevitable that the chickens are gonna wander. So that's my personal recommendation.
Would you be ashamed to say, "Fowl must be kept on their owner's property by an enclosure or supervision?"
That's, that's well said.
I think that's clear.
That's well said. I hate to agree with you, Bill.
Bill, in for the save.
Elegant in its simplicity.
I think that's very good. I, I also think we don't have to specify hours because I, I understand where you're going with that, Matt, but I, I think it's a little too specific. And I, I'm from the Midwest. I grew up with this situation. And if you have a chicken or a rooster or any kind of fowl and you also have a fox, which we do, you absolutely will pin them at night for their own safety.
Or you won't have them.
And I would, I would almost go to the math that that's probably the way most chickens people are gonna be.
Otherwise they would be gone.
Yeah, becau- I mean, you, you-
The hawks are worse than the chickens.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have to. So I think the, I think we can let the hours go and go with Bill's comment. I think that's succinct and to the point.
Can you say it again?
So I would, I would-
Do we have a motion here?
Yeah, I would, I don't want to disrupt the discussion, but I'll make a motion based on the discussion to date and withdraw my previous motion and make a new one.
So that's, so-
You have to withdraw the second and then withdraw the motion?
Well, that's fine. You can just withdraw it and then we'll finish the discussion and you can make a new motion.
Okay. So, so I would move that we adopt the ordinance as published, changing paragraph A of Article Four to read, "Outdoor fowl must be kept on-"
We're debating outdoor, is that enough?
Yeah, delete outdoor. Just say fowl.
Fair. Fowl must be kept on-
Their owner's property.
On their owner's property.
By an enclosure.
Or supervision. And further amend the ordinance to recite that there are no penalty provisions for violations of Articles Four or Five. No, no civil penalty. No, no penalty provisions.
So I definitely can't get behind saying there are no penalties within the ordinance. There's-
Why may I ask?
Right. Well, there should be a second for this motion for it to be in order for us to further discuss it.
Why don't you drop it? Don't say there's no penalties. Just don't list them and let it go.
That was my intent by not listing them.
So just leave it at that?
I, that's fine with me. I'll say, that's my only proposal is to amend Article 4A as, as stated.
One second.
Do we need 4B?
4B?
Yeah. Do we need to say that it can be, that-
It can't be closer than 10 feet.
That the enclosure can't be closer than 10 feet?
I think we keep it.
Think we keep that?
I think we keep that.
Okay. All right. And then do we need Article Five, the waste management?
Well, again, I'd be repeating myself. I think that's a best practice.
It doesn't hurt.
And, and it's, it's guidance for people who are doing this. And honestly, this is like motherhood and apple pie to me. I mean, not to be gender biased, but I mean, good heavens, everybody who owns anything don't, doesn't want to, in today's world, we don't want to pollute the world. So I stand by that.
And it also sets expectations. As Paula was saying, people came in thinking it, it would be okay to, to just sort of let them roam and do whatever you want. I think this sets expectations and I think clarity of that sort of helps.
All right. So it's, motion's been made and seconded and discussed. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
It's, it's an ordinance you have to do, waste of one at a time.
Okay.
Are you going with the motion to just have supervision of your chickens that makes them stay on your own property for enclosure?
Yes. Okay.
Paul, you need to call each council member's name and have them say yes or no to the, whether they vote in favor of or against the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. So, Charlie, four, are you in favor or not in favor?
Uh, yes, in favor.
And you can just call names, Paul, and they can say a or no.
In favor. Done.
Catherine?
Yes, in favor.
Matt? Shannon?
Aye.
Leonard?
Yes.
I know. I know.
Did you abstain, Leonard?
All right. And Joe?
Would it be inappropriate to clap or something?
You can clap. Thank you, Leonard.
Thank you, Leonard.
Sorry for talking so much.
Good job.
I hope they never talk about it again, ever.
I won't make the changes in the written part of the ordinance and have it back to Paul tomorrow. Then it'll have to be circulated for, for you and Paul and the mayor to sign it.
Okay.
I'll send an email to Paul and just, I'll copy you, guy.
Okay. You, you want to do that, Leonard, instead of me?
Yes. Well, I may have copied you.
Okay.
Your solicitor. I'll make sure I don't screw up.
That takes us to highway insurance and technology. Tony?
Got to refocus here. We have before us today Resolution 4-2025 authorizing an application to the Delaware County Council for an allocation of county liquid fuel tax funds in 2025 for the municipal roadway and street improvement program. This is for us to take advantage of the legislation that allows counties to appropriate and expend money for improvement of state highways and state aid highways or public highways in the county. And this would be us making a, an application to the county for county liquid fuel tax funds in the amount of $1,553 to be carried forward and used for the 2025 Rose Valley Borough Road Improvement Program.
Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that's approval, but all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, 7-0. Thank you. That takes us to library. Catherine?
So I passed out to Borough this food truck event coming up for Helen Kate. This will be a Delco Gives fundraising event. It will be Food Truck Friday on April 25th from 5:30, 7:30 in the library parking lot. There will be four food trucks and live music. So if you can support the library, that would be great. Secondarily, Delco Gives Day will be May 8th and 9th. I will be present for that and I believe that it's gonna be, we're having a Zoom in the morning, but I believe it will be again in Rose Tree Park. And every donation of $10 or more made between April 1st and May 9th will qualify the library for bonus funds. So if you're thinking about supporting the library, now is the best time of the year to do it. And then we also have a full slate of lectures with the authors. That is on the Helen Kate website. If you look it up, they're all free. You just log in and register and you can be on a live lecture Zoom with all of the authors. And please consider giving to the annual donor fund. We just did our annual appeal for Helen Kate and we are short this year and we are also concerned about losing funding. So if anybody is interested in how to become a sponsor or a donor for Helen Kate, you can reach out and contact me or you can get the information on the website.
Thank you. Public safety, Cheryl?
Okay. In your packets, you have the state police report. There were no major incidents in the valley, false alarm, traffic violation, a welfare check, an officer called and referred to other agency, which has nothing to really to do with us. Well, it has that. On the subject of the state police, our community service officer that had been assigned to us and that we'd hoped to meet with, Officer Quentin Bryant, has been promoted and he is no longer in the position. So, um, they don't know, they don't have a timeframe for filling that position. In the meantime, there are two other officers whose names I have forwarded as my way of introduction to Paula, so that she has their direct numbers and names, who will provide the reports. And they said they'd keep in touch when they had somebody, so. It's a kind of, you also have in your packet the, the speed report. Notice it's only for Thunderbird Lodge again. Back to that. So unfortunately, the parking lot northbound sensor is not working again or still. I have, good news, I have actually found a human being with a name, a direct line, a cell phone number, and knowledge. So, in the coming days, I only got in touch with him two or three days ago. The next step seems to be to verify that there's power going to the sensor. And so, I'm going to see if I can, I'm going to send him some pictures and see if I can visually inspect it. Otherwise, it's a job for either an electrician, a handy person, or somebody with a ladder to use a, a device to check if there's current going to it. Whether there is or not, the first troubleshooting thing would be simply to unplug it and plug it back in, and then they will take us down a troubleshooting path. So, there's an easy step. If I can get some, I will, I will find some help. I just can't imagine being on a ladder up there. So, that was kind of a good news, bad news. The good news is that the speeds were not very high, they were not unusually high. As we have warmer weather, I think people start going faster. And the good news is, we still have the one operational device, so. Nothing to report on Town Watch. The fire report, there was a automatic fire alarm, and there was a brush fire, which is the segue into restriction of it from burning for droughts. This restriction, is, was this at the behest or the request of the EAC to?
No.
To warn people that, okay.
No, so some.
Says Rose Valley EAC at the bottom, so.
This is, this is what we give out now to the Rose Valley. We have a burn ordinance that limits, and only just dead, you know, during the day. But we, after the last council meeting, we've gotten some requests from residents because we were still in the drought.
Yep.
And the, uh, the Fire Marshal in Nether Province had declared a burn ban in Nether Province. Our residents were saying, why not do that too? Well, I contacted our Fire Marshal, Matthew Saun, and he said, well, it's starting to rain now, so it's, so we're not in that drought period anymore. But then, we, I had a couple of incidents last week where a resident was having enormous fires on his property, and the Fire Company had to be called out two times to deal with this, this event. So, then it brought up, well, why, or the Fire Marshal said, why don't you ban burn? Ban burning in Rose Valley? So, that's sort of what led us up to this, like, would you consider doing that?
Like, all the time?
All the time.
Do you have a copy of our burning ordinance now?
Well, they have a copy of.
Of the synopsis?
Of the synopsis.
So, but that, I'm sorry for asking, but it does reference the Rose Valley Environmental Pleasure Council, which I'm chair of for some years. I have never known about this, so, that shame on me. But is this an ordinance, or is?
Additionally, there's an ordinance.
There is an Ordinance Three Twenty-Seven, which is an ordinance dealing with burning rubbish, objectionable accumulations of rubbish, and open burning on people's property under certain circumstances. Those circumstances being governed by drought, rain, wind, and other circumstances.
But that doesn't prohibit burning sticks.
It does not prohibit.
It was rubbish and leaves.
There's another one, then. There's another burning ordinance that does prohibit.
When, when you're allowed, you're allowed first.
That's, this is leaves and trash.
Sticks, not leaves.
This is just leaves and trash.
It shall be unlawful to constitute a public nuisance for persons owning or occupying property to deposit or cause to deposit maintenance, rubbish, or other objectional accumulations, so on and so on.
So, since, it seems that if we're going to do something, everybody should have an opportunity to look at the ordinance, so that we could discuss it or move on it next, next month.
I think there's a couple ways we could go.
Okay.
We could look at this ordinance and decide whether or not it's adequate. It's not going to stop people from burning sticks. So, we could decide whether we need to broaden this to burn sticks, or whether we want to develop some procedure for declaring, you know, the broad burn ban during times of drought.
I think that those could be, yeah, two separate things. You might do this and that. But I, I don't know without looking at it. My concern would be, I'm personally, I'm okay with people burning sticks. I mean, but what people have to do is do it under the right conditions and carefully. And if the ordinance already specifies how and when to do it carefully, and people are just breaking the rule.
I can send it to anybody tomorrow.
Then they're just breaking the rule that we already have. So, that's what I don't know.
It doesn't talk about sticks.
That means that you can burn sticks.
It does. I mean, just because Paula told me.
It says you can burn sticks because it doesn't prohibit burning sticks.
Right.
Which also means it doesn't.
You can burn sticks.
It doesn't say that you have to do it, you know, with water source charged and nearby and.
I mean, there have been a number of complaints in my, around me with people letting their kids get, fires get out of control. I mean, there should be an adult there.
So, can I ask a question, Matt?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
I have two, I have.
Okay.
A couple of questions. First of all, Matthew Pauso is our Fire Marshal. I didn't know we had a Fire Marshal. Good to know. Does our Fire Marshal have the legal authority to issue a directive to prohibit burning in times of drought?
I do not know the answer to that question off the top of my head.
Okay.
I believe that Fire Marshals do have emergency provisions, authorizations, but I don't know how far that goes.
Okay, so.
I can get that to you.
The simple objective that I have is in a world where we're going to have more periods of extreme drought, or the opposite of extreme drought, but we had an extreme drought until recently, and maybe we still have it because the rains we've had haven't been sufficient. But it's inevitable that we will have periods of extreme drought. It seems to me whenever such a period arrives, there should be a nimble method of our borough to direct legally that fires are prohibited, period. If we don't have that capability today, having spent a few hours today reading the mayor's code and the Borough Council code, my takeaway from it, although I'm not an expert, is that Borough Council could pass an ordinance that empowers the mayor to have such authority. If we don't have that ordinance, we should pass it, in my view. If, on the other hand, the Fire Marshal can do that, that's fine too, so long as we have a method of having an immediate determination, without a Borough Council meeting, without a lot of debate and discussion, to deal with an inevitable emergency of a drought condition where fires outdoors should not be allowed, full stop. So, either we have that or we don't. If we have it, we should just know it and implement it, in my view. If we don't have it, we should make it possible.
Okay.
Generally, Borough Council cannot expand the powers of the mayor because his powers come from the state code designated all of his powers. However, in those powers, the mayor has certain emergency provision powers that he, on the basis of safety, may issue emergency orders stopping certain things, whatever those things may be, depending on what the emergency is. I don't know how that specifically applies to fires at the moment.
Either the mayor can do it, or he can't. That's what we need to know.
We have to find that out.
If the mayor can't, we should achieve it some other way.
So.
And we'll find out about the Fire Marshal, too, so we can do that for next month.
Right. So, can you figure out, does the Fire Marshal have that authority?
I can figure that out.
And can the mayor?
Does the mayor have that authority? Or can council pass a resolution or an ordinance giving the council president or the Borough manager that authority? If we can't give the mayor that authority, then maybe we can give the council president or Borough manager that authority.
According to the manual for mayors, it says, for many reasons, most if not all councils choose to authorize the mayor to declare a local disaster emergency.
Good.
So, to me, a drought with the risk of fire is a local disaster emergency. It has to be.
That's already in the state code that he has that power. You don't need to have a resolution by, I don't know why it says that, but you do not need a resolution. That is in the state code. I know it's there, and the mayor can exercise those powers.
Let's not argue this here, Guy. I'm reading words that disagree with you. So, we don't, it, it, we're not an argument.
Let's figure it out for next one.
We just have to figure it out, and I'm happy to work with Guy and the mayor and you, Matt, and recommend something. I offered you that in an email. So, the next week, we can, next meeting, we'll just have an answer.
Good. Excellent.
And in the meantime, let's hope it rains. It's your ass raining.
So, the last item on public safety is the removal of the large poplar tree. As I recall, in the last meeting, we were going to see if we could top it instead of bring it down, and we're trying to keep the cost down for.
And we wanted two more quotes, Paul.
And we did, and I put them in here. We got two quotes. We had one from Carney for three thousand dollars, and then we got another one from, another one for the one tree from Jakes, or from Flynn, and Flynn was thirty-five hundred. And then, Jakes came, and he actually gave us, because there's another tree right next to it, that also is not in good shape. So, they gave us a quote for two at eight thousand, but I assume one would be four thousand. This eight thousand dollar quote for two. So, Carney's the lowest, the lowest.
Yes, and we can talk with Joe. Carney indicated, if you don't want to take the whole tree down, you're not going to save Carney any money, because all the money is getting the crane on site, the people on site, whether you take the last. And this tree is pretty close to the house, this site.
What property is this tree on?
It's on Borough property. It's in back of one oh three.
Okay. You're revisiting the issue that began my first year on Borough Council.
Yes.
And I'm sorry I gave a long speech then, I'm going to give a very short speech now. I abstained from the previous decision to use taxpayer money to pay for the removal of a tree on Borough property, when I understand the law to be that there is no legal liability for the Borough to have a tree, even if dangerous and perceived as it risk of falling, onto a neighbor's property.
But did we address that last meeting?
We did.
That's not the case. That's not the case.
We discussed this.
We do have.
Okay. We do?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Do we need?
I'll be quiet.
Do we need? It's a three thousand dollar charge. Do we need to vote specifically to accept this proposal?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there a motion to accept the proposal from Carney Tree for three thousand dollars to remove the one large poplar?
And I just want it settled once and for all. We informed, the HOA informed the Borough that the tree was in danger of coming down, that we have an arborist who has said that. And if they, the Borough wants to leave it there, and it falls on the house, it's a possibility that all three units within that single unit would be affected. We could wind up having to repay the, to fix the entire three units. So, alls I'm saying is, if it falls, you've been notified. The HOA will sue us, will sue the Borough, if, if it happens.
So, I was asking if there's a motion to approve Carney's invoice to take the tree down?
I have a motion, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
No, actually, I can't because.
I was going to say, you should, you should not be the one to make that motion, please. And, and you should, you don't have to abstain as long as you have declared your conflict. You, you can still vote on it. But you can't make, you shouldn't make the motion.
No, I will not.
I'm not making it. I still don't understand a lot.
When we did discuss this, this years ago, this was.
We talked about it a couple times.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
When we first came, there was an issue around about taking numbered trees down, but I understood very differently. So, in the last month, we were told, actually, there is liability, because I did not vote for it the first time on, on council. So, when we had the discussion last month, saying that we actually are going to be liable, that was different than my, my understanding of our earlier conversation. So, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little confused by that.
So, with apology, I do remember we discussed this last month, but I do remember I said, I'm sorry, as of now. But Guy, you're telling us the Borough has liability.
Yes.
Under these circumstances.
Yes.
This would be an exception to the general immunity from, toward suit that we otherwise have.
Right. This, this is, this is not a, an accident, like a car accident toward, this is a, this is a dangerous condition, and we've been advising the dangerous condition. And so, we are now on notice of the dangerous condition, and we would be wise to get rid of it.
No, and I'm fine to do this now, but I, I will want, I just want to better understand why the last time we had this conversation, it was, it was.
I don't remember the last time.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
From one to the other.
Years, maybe two or three years ago.
The law hasn't changed. I remember it very vividly.
That's why I'm asking.
I remember it differently, but I'm not going to.
Was it a different situation? Did something change? It's, it's fine for right now, I'm not going to, you know, hold this up, but we had a very different conversation, I feel like, when we first were on council. And this, this, this very similar situation came up. The arborist said these trees need to come down, and we, we did it, but we did not, I remember it being that we did it more because we wanted to.
But not because we were liable.
Not because there was liability, but now it sounds like we do have that, and I just want to better understand if the situations were different or something, it's just.
And I think what comes after in the law is, you're, you have immunity unless you're negligent. And if we've been told it's dangerous and we're negligent.
That was the same as last time, though. We were told that, too.
Well, then, we wouldn't be negligent, we can't, can't be negligent. For negligence, then they have to, then a lawsuit could be filed.
Right. But that was, we had a different conversation last time, so I just want to understand why, but not tonight. I don't need to understand.
I adopt what she, I'm taking the same position Shannon says.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I abstain, I'm abstaining.
Any opposed? One abstention or two?
No, I said I'm going to go for.
Yeah, no, I was looking, I didn't see what.
I'm, I'm abstaining.
Abstaining as well. All right, so it's five to zero with two abstentions. Okay. That's it for planning, thank you. So, that takes us to, or excuse me, that's it for public safety, that takes us to planning.
Right. I'm going to flip the order just to do the, to get the temporary construction easements. So, as we have done before, we are looking to authorize the Borough to prepare and execute temporary construction easements for the pathway project on a couple of additional properties. We did that with Cedars and.
Thomas.
And Thomas's properties. So, tonight, I'm asking if we can vote to authorize the Borough to execute the additional agreement as needed for the pathway project.
So, is that a motion?
I move that we do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I carry seven zero.
Okay, so, on the fence ordinance, you all have in your packet, right? And marked up copy of the proposed fence ordinance. And for tonight, we are taking comments on the ordinance in terms of having one, in terms of what is in this ordinance. We have had some comments from the public. As Leonard noted, once we get to a position of publishing, it will be published on the website and other forum for public comment before we decide to vote on a.
Sorry, am I loud this time or not? I've never been one to be so loud. It was just about the audio on the, there was, the audio was cut for the public comment section, so the people who had shared their input at that time weren't reported.
Tonight, is that what you're saying?
I think, yeah, because we heard from, a neighbor of ours texted a few that are watching and live.
I got a, I got a text, there was something not connected correctly, so I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. I mean, it's, I'm sure. No, that's okay. I, I mean, it's, I, I'm sure, yeah, it was an accident. But I just wanted to see if, you know, how that conversation, those, those comments would be documented for public?
In our minutes.
They're in the minutes.
So, they'll be in the minutes. They'll be summarized in the minutes, and we'll vote to adopt those minutes next month.
Okay.
So, we, we summarized them from notes, but you also had, I think that also the letters that have been written are preserved by the, written to the Borough. The Borough has. And if there was anything else, like, if you want, you were reading from notes, if you wanted to send that, that would be all right?
Yeah, that's fine. We just...
Yeah, if you want to send them, make, make Rose Valley Borough a public document.
Yeah. I mean, it's a shame not to have heard your voice, but we'd have your words.
And I'll just mention with regard to your comments that if we pass the fence ordinance, existing fences will be grandfathered.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to take down an existing fence just because we passed it.
Right, but if we can't repair them?
You can repair it.
You can repair it.
Okay. Okay.
Can you modify, meaning you want to change the material of an existing fence, or you modify existing fences no longer within...
If the material is a material allowed by the fence ordinance. What you can't do is make it like more non-conforming than it already is.
Understood. No, it's, it's an allowable material, but you want to change the, like, the height remains whether it wants to be a different material.
Like, if we need to replace, if we wanted to replace it for nice circle ones or something like that, that's possible to do.
Is there a, is there a permit required?
No.
No. So, what's, what's in your packet tonight is, if you recall last month, we had a much more expansive ordinance in our packet, and we decided to go back to something that's more akin to what Nether Providence has. So, what's in your packet tonight is, um, is the updated proposed version, which is based on what Nether Providence has. But then it shows my redlined edits to that to make it what I would suggest adopting here. So, it's changing, it's removing dirt and sod from its definition of a fence, which, that didn't make any sense to me. It's saying the fence has to be 10 feet from a property line, and I don't think it should be that. I think it should be two.
Wait, wait. Which one should be two?
10 feet from?
4A1.
4A1. The one you and I talked about before meeting.
Oh, okay. Right. Okay.
I don't think there should be a whole section on non-conforming fences. That is what it is. And I was okay with just sticking with the general state code for penalties rather than having our own specific penalties. But I'm agnostic on that one.
While we're talking about section four, what is the meaning of the fence is located behind the rear building line? I don't know what that means.
Building line is, used to be defined...
Like, if this is your house, and this is the road, this is the rear of your house, that's the rear building line. So, you have to put it in the backyard.
You can only do a deer fence in your backyard.
Not in the side yard, not in the front yard.
Didn't that used to be in the definitions? All of that was very confusing language that I read in at least some other ordinances about building lines.
Again, we're back to the simplified version.
Simpler, yeah. Is this a time for discussion?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm glad to see that it has no barbed wire, razor wire, or electrified wire. I mean, that's a, I think something should be in there. I think one of the things I had not considered and, um, and that the public comment kind of brought to my mind is what you do if there's a need to build a fence and you have a slope.
You have a what?
So, a slope.
A slope, like the people mentioned earlier.
Yeah, that's not just, there's been some other people, but it's come up a few times. And I'd just like to toss that out. I mean, effectively, for the people at the bottom of the slope, they could have a, you know, 20, 30-foot fence, and the people at the top could just have, you know, a little six-foot fence. So, I don't know how that is addressed and whether simply people need to move the fence to, you know, farther up the slope, or whether there's a provision here that says that you could apply for a variance, something?
That there is an option.
So, you apply for a variance, you come before the board, you say, we got this slope, here's a picture, you see, what, what can we do? And, you know, those things, I think, are pretty fairly handled. So, anyway, if you could always get a variance, because that is, was news to me, thinking that slope was...
And a variance is based on a, a hardship that runs with the land. It's not a self-imposed hardship. In other words, you didn't build the hill.
Right.
It was there when you got there.
Yeah. And you can't make the hill go away.
So, it's not a self-imposed hardship. It's a, a genuine hardship. And that would entitle people under most circumstances to a, a variance, to, uh, put them on a par with people who don't have the, uh, the problem.
I don't, I may be told that this is a term, but in, also in responding to public comment, I don't know how many months, but it's all public record. The discussion about fences has gone on also since last fall, at least, or last summer. This is not something that came out last month. We started thinking about it. There have been pool fences and deer fences and different kinds of garden fences and front fences and building lines. So, this is not something that outsiders brought up and, and prompted this to happen. So...
Yeah. I just, I wanted to add that, too, just so you know. Um, there were multiple fence issues in Rose Valley.
And this was not one of them.
And this was not, not one of them. That didn't start it. Um, and it had to do with pool fencing. So, you know, that's maybe something, anybody that's interested in building pool, you are going to want to read about your fencing and your covers before you do, because it was news to everyone on this board, what Pennsylvania has...
And other neighbors, yeah.
Adopted for pool fencing. It is, it is not required. So, um, that's what started the fence thing, and that's why we have a fence ordinance.
Just to supplement that, to my great dismay, a pool fence is not required if you have an automatic electric cover that is used appropriately according to instructions.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Personally, I think a fence should be done in addition, but we're not allowed to do that.
And that's under the Uniform Construction Code, and we were mandated to adopt that code as written.
Yes, according to the Construction Code.
So, we didn't have an option.
That's a life-saving issue.
And then you're just hoping that someone operates it or not.
Yeah, I think, I think it's insane, but we've been informed by our solicitor, and I agree with him, that we have no option.
So, that and many other disputes between neighbors about putting the bad side out, having something that was, you know, deemed unsightly. People have different ideas about what's nice or not. But can't solve all that.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, please?
Nice.
So, as it's written in the version you passed out to us on...
Can't hear you, Leonard. I'm sorry.
As it's written in the version we're discussing with your edits, Matt, section 3B says that a fence shall be located at least six inches inside all property lines. But deer fences are two feet from the property line. Why is that? Why is there a difference?
Well, it's a tech...
A fence that's made out of stone or brick can be with six inches, but a deer fence that you can look through is two feet.
Probably just because of the height. I, I don't, we, we can strike that.
I, I, I'm just trying to understand.
Would you like to strike it?
I mean, I have a deer fence. I'll be grandfathered in.
You're grandfathered in.
I know that, but I just, I thought it was supposed to be six feet inside the property line. No? Okay. Well, I think if you can build a wall out of brick that's within six inches, you should be able to put a deer fence that's mesh within six inches.
So, then let's take out 4A1. Okay?
Good with me. And, and then, as a drafting exercise, if we define fence to include a wall, we should not say in later sections, no fence or wall. We should just say no fence.
Okay.
Because the definition of fence includes a wall.
All right.
And I would say an enclosure or wall or barrier. And then you don't need the last sentence for fence.
Where are you?
Section two definition. Because if you define it as that, you can have it mean that...
Yeah, but I think there's different kinds of walls. So, the intent of the last section is just to say a wall is only a fence if it's being used for the same purpose. So, in other words, the wall of your house is not a wall for purpose of the fence ordinance. It's only when you built a wall to keep something in or something out.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, well, then, fine, keep the last sentence, but then we don't have to say fence or wall. We just say fence.
I agree. I think A, because I think you can take out the retaining wall or building wall, and just say no fence shall be u, shall be constructed or erected that is greater than six feet.
Okay. And then I have a further question, having observed the neighbor in Todd Morton, who's built a beautiful fence that I think would be in full compliance here. But because it's on a slope, it's done with posts and a beautiful wood material. But because it's on a slope, at the end of the slope, there's a large space underneath the fence. So, it's two feet of open air underneath the fence. And then the next section starts at the ground and goes, continues down the slope. That's a privacy fence that does nothing to prevent children or animals from getting in or out, because they can crawl right underneath it. And so, I think we should say, for the purpose of this, a fence can be for the purpose of keeping people or animals inside the enclosure or out of the enclosed space or for privacy.
Yeah.
Yep.
There used to be a separate privacy definition, but that's nicer.
Because as it's written, that fence would be not allowed to be built tomorrow or next month.
Okay. Good.
And the last thing I'd say is, we ought to define a deer fence in the definitions instead of saying...
Yep.
And put the definition of the deer fence in section A in the definition section. And then section four can just be deer fences. And you have, and just say it's permitted, subject to, is permitted. That's all it has to, and...
Subject to some...
Saying no and then saying yes is complicated for me.
Yep. Okay.
Good.
Any other comments? My, my thought is that I'll go back and revise this, and we'll have a clean, updated version in our packets for discussion next month.
Okay. So, we'll vote on publishing it next month?
We would then vote on publishing it.
Next month.
Next month. And we would then, after it's been published and commented on, vote whether or not to adopt it.
Done.
Well, vote to adopt it if that's the way we go.
I, I want to just raise, since it's been raised by the residents, the difference between six and eight feet and what folks think about that. Given the topography around here, I, I understand the ask and why it's there. Um, I don't know if six versus eight feet is a tremendously meaningful difference as far as what we want to establish as a standard. I do understand that that is the typical standard in, in the area. But I wanted to raise the question and get, get some feedback.
That's a good point. I mean, we don't have to follow the crowds.
So, I, I think practically speaking, when you buy fencing, you're typically buying it in six-foot height.
Right.
So, I think chances are, most people are going to end up building six-foot tall fences. I don't have a strong feeling whether we should go to eight instead. Six is what, it says six just because that's what all the other ordinance is saying.
If you want eight, you ask for a variance.
And if you want eight, you can get a variance.
I don't, I don't really like saying, you know, if you want that, you, I, I just, you know, I'd rather say...
On a case-by-case basis, though.
Yeah, I'd rather set a rule that we're comfortable with across the board. And then...
So, would, if you say eight-foot fences, like, I might think that eight or even 10 feet might be appropriate in a specific area for a slope, you know, for a property owner says, here's the topography I'm dealing with. But I wouldn't want to say, well, everybody could have a 10-foot fence right next to their neighbor, we're letting it be right next to a property, next to their neighbor's house.
Yeah. No, I agree. I, I...
Unless there was a, a good reason, like, something, and they could then ask. But I don't want... So, Joe, you didn't get my little, but my...
It's your turn.
It's in the packet.
Oh, it was. Good, because I messed up on my email. Sorry, you didn't.
I think Tony makes a good point. I mean, our neighbors just around the corner from us.
I'm sorry.
Neighbor just around the corner, a different neighbor, built a fence, and it's eight feet tall, or it's more than six. I can tell you that for sure, because you can't see over the top of it if you're standing on one side. And I'm less than six feet tall. And I can see the logic to having a fence being a little bit more than human height for privacy. I don't think it creates an eyesore or, or, or offensiveness to have it be eight rather than six.
Offensive.
Oh, inadvertent. It was an accident. Uh, but, but I mean, I, I'm just observing that, that I, and I do agree with Tony that if we think eight's okay, we should say that, not ask people to do a variance. And I didn't really think about the difference between six or eight, but...
Is there, is there, there's no sort of, like, safety issue where if you get over a certain height that, that fences aren't as stable or is, is, you know, I'm, is that...
Theoretically, the taller you build it, the...
But is there, like, a tipping point, so to say, like, is six to eight, is there really a difference in, like, safety or...
Probably not.
Not that we know of.
Or perspective, you know, in terms of...
Yeah.
For any of them, it's whether it was built right or not.
A lot of the things I've seen are custom-built. They're not built by getting it from a prefab six-foot height.
Does anybody strongly feel like we should stick to six?
I don't strongly feel, I came up with that suggestion because 13 out of 13 neighboring communities have that. And so, it was a starting point.
Everybody think eight's fine? All right. Well, let's go with eight for purposes of discussion next week or next month. Okay. Did you still want to make comments?
Yeah, I want to make a comment. So, my first question is, how do you guys define the height of a fence? When you're saying six feet, eight feet, what dimension, not to get very pedantic, but it matters, what dimension are you referencing to? Are you referencing from ground to top of fence?
Yes.
Yes.
Then if you pass six feet and even eight feet, you need to be very prepared for having to deal with a lot of variance requests, because we live in a, the topography in this area is very hilly. And our fence, for example, is a six-foot fence. We bought a panel construction fence, which means it's prefab panels, but you hire someone to come out and put posts in, and then they, they fasten the panels to the posts. Those panels, because we have topography that goes up...
So, we took a great change from our house up to...
I mean, we're up in Todd Morton. It's called Spy Hill. It's where we were spying on the revolution, during the Revolutionary War. It's, it's a big hill. You can see this, see it here. Going up our backyard, there are points that our fence is eight and a half feet tall, nine feet tall, even though we bought six-foot panel fencing.
So, we have stepped vents where we're filling in beneath the fence?
And we filled in beneath the fence, but it's still, I'm five foot nine. It's, it's high. And it's not an eyesore. It's, it's very well constructed. I do, as a structural engineer, I think it's, it's responsible to the Borough to, to create an ordinance, just like you have in the legal code. It's important to build fences that are safe and, and are going to fall apart on children or whatever. I would consider being flexible, being very clear on what defines the height of the fence and also take into account the slope, because the application we were discussing earlier where the fence is maybe 10 feet tall, I have no idea. But the reason they had to build it, I imagine, that high is because of the topography to create that privacy. So, it is going to be somewhat of a challenge in terms of defining the language that creates a fence that isn't, you know, the, the Berlin Wall. Or, we don't need that. But you also don't want to say, okay, eight feet, it, it's going to be hard to find the right, right value.
Oh, good point. You said you filled in under...
We filled in...
We're in the process of filling in beneath the fence, because it's stepped, because we have a third...
Yeah. So, you filled in with soil or something?
Yeah.
So, in fact, from the bo, from the soil at the bottom to the top of the fence, it's still six feet in your case?
When we fill in to the bottom of the fence, but actually, eight and a half feet is certain.
But if you look at it, if you look at it like this, it's, it's filled in. There's, like, almost a hump, you know?
Mm-hmm.
It's not, and, and then you have the normal topsoil. So, actually, from the topsoil to the top of the fence is like eight and a half feet tall.
But from the soil at the bottom of the fence?
From the natural soil of the, of the yard.
From the land, because we have-
You've made it look like it's a six-foot fence.
Correct, like, and then we're putting planting, so, so really, to be, to be, could an argument be made that a six-foot fence from the top of where the soil starts at the panel? Sure, but in reality, it's actually like a-
But we can't see what, what you've done. When it's all done, all anyone could see is a six-foot fence, right? It appears that way.
Yeah, you would not define it as a six-foot-
Not that in other cases, they might not be able to, I was just-
The panels themselves are six feet.
But our posts are, and our, that's why the posts have to be accounted for. The posts are eight feet.
Eight, nine, ten.
So, like, if you build an eight-foot fence, you may have a nine-foot post, a 10-foot post. So, is that part of your definition?
I think we're defining the posts-
I think we're just defining fence, though, so I think it's just the panel.
And I've never seen anybody cited for where the posts are slightly higher than that.
But the top of the panel is at eight, eight and a half feet in some, some place, eight and a half feet in some places. So, I think, just my thoughts would be to be, to think about how hot, how you wanna define the height, and understand that the topography in this region is extremely hilly. So, to be much more, six feet is gonna be very impractical. Eight or nine feet might make sense, and you could also, it, it, it should be pretty, because of that, there's so many different types of fencing, I would consider also panel fencing versus picket structure to make sure that-
Yeah, this doesn't really go in, into a lot of detail about specific, really specific materials. And it also doesn't have a permitting requirement. So, this non-owner, so, a lot of this, like, I think a lot of the borough's ordinances, you know, it's a little bit, like, if nobody really complains about your fence, it's not a problem, then I would never come up, so the eight, eight and a half, six, six and a half, you make it 10, 10 and a half. Well, it's over here, it's a lot, I don't think that those things are going to create problems for residents, either with their neighbors or with the borough. But, it's a good point, you know, to think, think it through.
It, it seems there's just a clarification needed, that the measurement of the height of the fence is not from the ground up, but the measurement is the size of the panel.
No, it's gonna be from the ground up, but it, it, we'll have to look at our ordinance to see whether, because height, which is the term used here, might already be defined in our ordinance. So, we'll have to check that.
And some of them have specific for the panels and for the uprights, and there's a, you know, you could have a panel. It considers the height of the fence in many ordinances to be the top of the panel, even though there are decorative crowns and things, which are not considered part of the height.
Or the structural posts, as you claim.
The posts are higher, and then maybe even additionally, you know, pretty little cornices or things on top, and that's not, that's not part of the measurement.
So, I'll come up with a revised draft for next month, and we'll go from there.
May, may I also ask, why, and I understand it's adapted from others, but what do we think about not having permits? This feels like an area where permitting actually can be beneficial.
Permitting's like, as Cheryl noted, it's like 50/50 in surrounding communities. We are a bit of a more libertarian kind of community, and so I'm going with that vibe. I'm trying to be consistent with what I think the culture of Rose Valley is, which is not over-regulating.
Do you think of permitting would be a good idea?
Where you're talking about something with structural limitations, and the design has to comply to certain specifics, a, a simple permitting regime doesn't seem out of line to me, but-
Just submitting something-
But I, but I take the, you know, I take the point of, you know, sort of community norm on that.
Or at least to notify the borough, it's worth thinking about.
Okay. Alright, that takes us to finances. Joe?
Chris?
Sorry, can't hear you.
I have to do the quick votes for the month against the bank statements, and they have been reconciled.
Yay!
Yes!
The income report, the income for the month was $162,250, comprised of approximately $121,000 in real estate tax, $30,173 in liquid fuels allocation from the state, and about $9,300 in real estate transfer tax receipts, and $2,400 in building costs. Any questions?
Bills for approval, this month, all the bills are coming from the general fund only. And the list of bills is in your package. There are a few things that you need. There's the annual contribution to the Centennial Foundation, $26,000. And there are a couple of bills that's dated with the zoning here you have just recently filed. For legal services. Otherwise, they're fairly standard.
Okay.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the bills for, and this says February, the agenda's, it says for February, but it's actually for April.
April.
For March, for April?
For April.
Paying.
So, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve those bills?
I submit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry seven zero. Takes us to Comcast franchise agreement, Joe?
Yeah. Why does this have to be approved tonight?
Does not. We just received the proposed draft of an agreement from Comcast. I believe I sent it out. I've received a couple of comments back. It did not contain Exhibit A, which was required, so I logged in Exhibit A, which basically says that they have to provide a cable outlet in the borough office. It contains a lot of standard language. I've also given out to everybody a proposed resolution that needs to be adopted to allow us to sign, allow council to sign the contract with Comcast. We have a contract with Verizon that the last one of those was done in May of 2019, Paula?
Right.
2019, so that has several more years on it. This is a 10-year contract that will go to 2035. I would like everybody, I will, I will send out the new version tomorrow. I just got it downloaded late today with the Exhibit A on it, and there were some, they had some glitches in there, they had some numbers that were out of sequence, and I changed those back into sequence. I need to send those to council. I need to send it back to the Comcast lady who wrote to me and get her approval for these changes. And then at the next meeting, council would approve the resolution, authorizing the borough manager, the council president, and the mayor to sign the, the contract, once we get everybody's approvals between now and then. So, this is simply informational on your, your agenda for tonight, because I need to get Comcast to approve the changes that I've made for it. And if you look at it and you see any changes you'd like made, get back to me with them, and I will, will let you know whether they're appropriate or not, and get them back to the Comcast people, because I, I don't, I don't want us to approve it without Comcast's approval for the changes.
Okay. Did I, I don't recall, why are we switching to Comcast?
So, we're not, it's actually, it's, it's actually worth a, a quick explanation, because I got a couple of questions from folks about what is a franchise agreement? What is, what is this thing? So, basically, this is Comcast, Verizon, any cable provider has to sign these agreements with whatever municipalities they operate in. And so, this agreement is us agreeing to allow them to offer cable service in the borough of Rose Valley. We get a little percentage of the revenue from cable service as compensation for the franchise agreement. And they also give us, you know, a free connection.
Joe, do you know off the top of your head what the annual revenue is from?
About $30,000.
And people are still getting Verizon, so-
So, we get the $30,000, and we don't do anything? They maintain it, they-
Yeah, this is literally just us giving them permission to operate in the borough.
And give us the money.
Five percent of revenue generated from their bills within the borough.
Right.
Okay.
And yes, it doesn't lock anybody into using Comcast, it's-
Do we have a similar agreement?
We have a similar agreement with Verizon.
We have one with Verizon, okay.
So, we will move to adopt that resolution either next month or the following, whenever-
I'm gonna get everything back to them as quickly as possible. I'd like to get it done next month if we can, so we can get it off the books and move on.
Great. Managers' report?
I have the only, I have two things. One is a large trash is gonna be made in six.
Sucks, I think everybody reads.
Yes, I know, the most fun time of the year, where all the residents just exchange their trash. So, that's gonna happen, and everyone will be notified. And then the other thing is-
So, Paula, instead of a large trash day, should we call it Rose Valley Swap Day?
Swap Day.
Right, that's really, that's really what it is. And then, this Saturday is Mayor Emeritus Tim Plummer's funeral at St. John's Church. And the visit, the visitation is between quarter, about quarter of 10, quarter of 11. The mass is at 11 o'clock, and then, when the mass finishes at 12, the family will proceed to the cemetery, and there will be a luncheon at 2 o'clock at Spring Haven Country Club, and everyone is invited, so, if you can, if you can help. And the borough is sending flowers to Margie Plummer. On behalf of the whole borough.
Thank you. Mayor's report?
So, Paula mentioned, maybe we should maybe should honor Tim Plummer, and we were thinking of ways to do it. And the suggestion has come up to rename the Borough Green. As you come in Old Mill Lane from Rose Valley Road on the left, Tim Plummer rescued that from development, and I got it basically borough property. Maybe Plummer Park has a nice ring to it, and would be a, a good way to honor it. And we could tell, if we wanna do anything tonight, we could tell Margie Plummer that we've, and we've named the, the old Borough Green, the Plumber Park in Tim's honor.
Do we need to do that by resolution?
You can do it by just motion, it's a regular motion if you wanna do that. And then, you'd probably wanna put some little plaque or something there that just-
Yeah, I was thinking, Marty O'Rourke has a pretty wooden sign that announces what his house, when his house was built. I was thinking, if you have something on that line, so when you're walking around or driving by, look at that and see if you all like that kind of idea, that we could put him a sign like that on the Valley.
Matt, this is, this is the, as you drive, as you exit off of Rose Valley Road-
So, tonight, when you leave, it's the property that's on your right?
On your right.
As you get to the road.
Where the sign that says Old Mill sits.
We had a big ceremony there when, after Tim rescued it from being developed, and they sold all of the trees and things on the property to-
It was, it was unbelievable, and Tim was such a pied piper, and how he had this idea to get people to make huge donations for things that were pieces of nature.
I mean, people bought trees for up to $10,000. I mean, I've never cared for my tree since I owned it. I, I say hello to it as I drive by, but that's pretty much it. I, I don't visit on its birthday or anything. But he basically sold all the large trees to people who made donations to the borough, so that we would have the money to keep it from being developed.
Did you get your name on it?
No, you didn't, but the funnier thing was-
He sold the same tree over and over.
But one of the things he sold was-
I think it's on the record, so be careful.
Oh, yeah, we are terrified not to wait.
I was joking.
I better not say if we're, if we have a discussion.
So, is there a motion to formally name that parcel at the end of Old Mill Lane, Plummer Park?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard four seconds, but we'll take the formal vote anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries seven zero. Solicitors' report?
I have been inundated these last days. I have no formal report other than the chaos that's been going on with everybody, with the chickens and the fences and the, it's-
Comcast.
I must have received 35 emails in the last 72 hours. I, I couldn't believe it. They just kept coming. And some of them went on for pages.
Better pay you than me this time, guy.
Well, they went on for pages with explanations that I wasn't even sure what the explanations were about. One lady sent pictures of her chickens.
A movie.
Yeah, but it was like, this is lovely, I'm watching a chicken movie.
Alright, Leonard, do you wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I do.
Is there a second?
I'm going to adjourn.
I heard a second from Shannon. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Floundering.
Thank you.
Something I'd like to drink.
Quick, get the microphone on. Paula, do you want to hear the story? Paula, by telling stories.